Well, good evening to everyone. My name is Paul Bryan. I was the Audit Partner for the current year and this is Chris Cassab. He functioned as our Audit Manager for the current year. What we were going to do is, and what you'll see on the board around the room for the members of the audience as well, would be the PowerPoint presentation regarding June 30, 2017. And what we wanted to do was walk through how the year ended up and more than happy to answer any questions that you have as we walk through the information. So for the current year, the district received an unmodified opinion, which as auditors is the best opinion that we as auditors can give to an organization. As you'll see as we walk through, the district was able to add to its fund balance for the current year despite some drops in its student population as well as some revenue changes in the current year. Due to some really good planning, and then also painful planning overall for the district, again, you were able to add to your fund balance for the current year. So Chris is going to walk through the information that, again, you'll have the PowerPoint in front of you. Feel free to ask questions as we go along.
Thanks, Paul. So you also have a draft of the audited financial report in front of you as well as the single audit report, which is the federal grants. So for the presentation, we're going to be focusing on the district's general fund, which is the primary operating fund. So this slide here presents the final budget, which was the final amended budget that was done in June. That's the far left column. And then the middle column is the actual results for the year ended June 30, 2017. So you'll notice you budgeted for an ending fund balance of just over $3.5 million and you came in a little better at $3.9 million, so a favorable variance of about $400,000 on your budget versus actual.
Before we leave, as Chris mentioned, so again, for the members of the audience, overall, this is the budget for the general fund. So the school district as a whole budgets for the general fund. And as was mentioned, you saw the first column. I feel like I want to point my teacher. You'll see in the first column that the net change where there was a slight increase to fund balance, that we're looking at that third line from the bottom, the $299,000. But again, based upon some cuts that were made throughout the year, the district was able to add more than that and by adding $648,000 for the year.
Yep, so this is a high-level overview of the revenue and expenditures. And the following slide will go into a little better detail of what makes up the revenue and what makes up the expenditures. So the first slide we have here looks at the general fund revenue for 2017, this current year and last year, 2016. So it breaks it out by category. So the top line you see there is federal revenue. So this would include mainly the district's federal grants such as Title I and IDEA, which is the special education grant. Local revenue would include primarily property tax revenue. And so that came in at about $3.1 million, which was about $100,000 more than last year, likely due to the increasing property tax values. The third line you see there, and the amount that makes up the bulk of the district's revenue is state revenue. And so the primary funding source here is your per pupil amount, the foundation allowance. And so you'll notice you had $20 million, 20.2 million in state revenue this year compared to 21.2 million. It's about a decrease of about $1 million from last year. And again, that's primarily due to the declining enrollment. And we'll touch a little bit on that in the subsequent slides as well. The fourth line you see there is the intermediate and other sources. The primary revenue source there is the special ed tax that you get passed through the Oakland Intermediate School District. And so in total, the district had $25.8 million of revenue in the general fund this year compared to $26.7. So on a gross basis, a total decrease of about $700,000 in revenue from last year. So we looked at revenue. This slide here breaks out the expenditures for the general fund by function and again, comparing 2017 to 2016. So starting at the top, instructions, so total instructional expenditures, and these would, I like to think of instructional expenditures as actual dollars going into the classroom. And so 13.7 was the total expenditure this year compared to 14.5 million last year. So you were able to shave about $700,000 of your expenditures this year. Support services, 10.1 this year compared to the 10.2 last year. This would be things like administration salaries, benefits, repairs and maintenance on buildings, utilities, anything kind of not going into the classroom. And then athletics and community services, $700,000 there this year, pretty consistent with last year, a little bit, a little bit less than last year. And then finally, you have your debt service and payments to other school districts. So this would primarily be the principal and interest payments on the district's debt at about $1.5 million. And so in total, you'll see you had 25, just over $25 million in expenditures this year compared to $26.1, which was a reduction of $1 million. So while your overall revenue went down, you were able to save money as well on the So this slide here is looking at the percentage of instructional expenditures as a percentage of total. So again, going back to that one slide of dollars kind of going into the classroom. So this year, the far right bar of 2017, about 55% of every dollar that was spent in the general fund was an instructional expenditure. So again, the way I like to think about that is about 55 cents of every dollar is benefiting the classroom. So although overall funding has decreased, you have really impacted the dollars going into, you have a disproportionately impacted dollars going into instructional expenditures.
And also looking at this, so you'll see that it did go down slightly from 2016. I looked at the other side. Your supporting services for the classrooms themselves went up slightly by that amount. So again, be it aids, be it other supporting type services for the classrooms itself, those dollars were still there to support the classroom, but they're just, they were slightly changed over the year regarding that.
So we've talked about revenue and expenditures and where that leads you at the end is what's left and that's your fund balance, the all-important number. And so the bar on the right presents the fund balance for this current fiscal year and shows the trend over the last seven years. So for this fiscal year, we had a fund balance of 3.9, just $3.9 million. And so that was broken out into two categories. The first category, which is the green bar there, at $2.2 million is your unassigned fund balance. And really, that's fund balance that can be used for just about anything. It's not restricted for any purposes. The orange bar there, which represents assigned fund balance at 1.6, this is primarily related to the $1.2 million that you have assigned for the water treatment plant repairs. And so again, this shows the trend in fund balance over the last several years and that trend is obviously moving in the right direction. It's going up. And just kind of another way to look at this, so your total unassigned fund balance as a percentage of your expenditures is around 9%. And then if you like to look at it kind of on a days basis, so if you didn't get any more revenue, how long would that fund balance last in the district? So on a 365-day calendar, that would last you about 33 days. And in looking at it over 180 days school year, that would last you about 16 days.
So one thing I always like to tell people, the numbers are big numbers. There are millions and things like that, but when you look at it on a relative basis and you think, okay, we have about $3.9 million sitting there, but when you actually think about it, that only represents probably 16 days overall for a district this size based upon your expenditures every year. But then also, if you look at 2015 compared to '16 and '17 for the assigned, you'll see it went from $700,000 to the $1.4 million. That's the 1.2 that the district has decided to set aside for the water treatment. So it's been assigned and at the discretion of the board, it has the ability to be moved. So although it shows that you are only at 9% for your fund balance, that number technically could go up based upon wherever you choose to reassign those numbers or that total $1.2 million decides to change.
Or it could go down.
Or it could go correct. Correct.
This slide here is looking at the trend in student enrollment over the last seven years. So the student enrollment on a blended count basis was 2,605 this year, which was a drop of about 130 pupils from last year. And then if you compare that back to where it was in the 2010-11 school year, that would be a total decrease of 755 pupils. And so how does that shake out on a revenue basis? So if you took your 755 student decrease and multiplied that by this year's foundation allowance, which was $7,511 per pupil, that represents a $5.6 million decrease in revenue over the last seven years, just strictly based on pupil count alone.
And as everyone knows, that's not one classroom. That is five kindergarteners, that is two second graders, that is spread out throughout the district. So you're still paying for the lights, the classroom cost, all of those things, but that revenue itself, again, is spread out. And you've had to make some tough decisions. And you can see why based upon that drop with a $5.6 million overall decrease in your possible revenue, looking at expenses of where you can control with the majority of that revenue coming from the state of Michigan.
And so this is just a trend analysis of the foundation allowance, which again is your per pupil amount over the last seven years. And the far right column is your $7,511, which is the amount for this year, comparing that to where it's been over the last seven years. So this year, you're just now getting back or exceeding where you were seven years ago. So there's been several years of deep cuts in state funding and you're just now getting back to where you were seven years ago.
Perfect world, the expenses would have dropped in 2011 to correspond to that revenue, but again, as Chris mentioned, you can see if you were to come, and that's one of the reasons we look at this starting at 2010. So you can be able to see, you're just now getting on that footing again compared to all those other prior years regarding this revenue. The expectation, I'll say fingers crossed, is that it's going to go up approximately another $120 for the upcoming school year. I'll say knock on wood that nothing comes where that has to be reduced or anything like that, but that's the expectation for the year going forward.
So that is all we have for it. We'll turn it over to you. If you guys have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any more questions before we end our work session? Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Jan and Kristi, for all your help in getting through the audit.
Thank you.
Seems every year it goes smoother and smoother.
Jan did a great job. We're very glad to have her.
Been on a mission to turn audit not into a bad work, but I've been getting a little pushback regarding it. So hopefully.
I like that we get unmodified results.
That's a good thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, updated upcoming science curriculum changes? Would you like to do that, Kristi? Would you like to do that now, Kristi, or wait until we start the other meeting?
It's going to be probably less than 60 seconds. You know that the next generation science standards were approved by the state as the new Michigan State Science Standards in the fall of 2015. We've been on a trajectory along with the rest of county to make changes to our own science curriculum so that we're compliant with that. Next fall, 2018, 19, we will have a new science sequence in place at the high school to make sure that we are compliant and we've been working on that. So this is just to sort of whet your appetite and say, hey, we're coming to you here in the next couple of months to let you know where we are in those conversations at the high school in terms of how we're going to make sure that we teach all of those standards to all of our students and still have our students have choice and the opportunity to pursue their passions.
Just, Kristi's working with a group of teachers and everybody. They're looking at all kinds of options right now that you have to listen recommendation, December, September?
November, December, yeah. Probably December.
Okay, any citizens comments or questions regarding our work session here before we close out and start our regular meeting this evening? Hearing and seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. We'll start up again in about two minutes. Anything we need to order this evening? Can we get a hold call?
Bob Ivesmire.
Here.
Lisa Cavallone.
Here.
Marion Dwyer.
Here.
Deb Brady.
Here.
Kevin McCollum.
Here.
John Sharp cheer.
Here.
Diane Salter.
Here.
Dr. Alba.
Here.
Jan Meek.
Here.
Ashley Fuleo.
Here.
And Bailey King.
She's on.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. And this evening, we have voice scouts doing leading us in the Fledge of Allegiance, so welcome.
Color guard, attention. Audience, please rise. Scouts salute. Those who are not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Color guard, advance. Color guard, post the colors. Please recite the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, return to ranks. Color guard, please be si, audience, please be seated.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Okay, first on our agenda this evening is school showcase, Oakwood Elementary.
Good evening.
That's you.
Thank you, Maria.
Good evening. Thanks for letting me showcase our school and what's going on this year. I just have a couple of things that I want to showcase. And this really is a sneak peek as to what's going on at Oakwood because right now, the children don't even know about these two things I'm going to share with you. We're in the beginning launching phases, so I just wanted to take a minute to share with you the two new things that are happening. The first thing that I'm going to highlight is the Read With Me program that we're just getting launched. And the second one is the Principal's Positive 200. Both of these, I want to say are new, but they're really just adding on to things we've already done, always trying to get better at what we're doing. So let me go through and show you a little bit about them. The Read With Me program started by a local pastor coming and talking to me about wanting to find volunteer opportunities for some people in the church. So when he came to me, he wanted to donate school supplies and things like that. Well, we had a service dog last year that came to our school that kids would read to, and I wanted to continue that. The dog couldn't read back to the kids and couldn't talk with them about the story, so I said, if they could use your people to come and actually add that to the reading volunteers that we have, that'd be great. So this year, we're going to start. He just came and we recorded an orientation video to share with the people who are going to volunteer. And they're going to come into classrooms and really pairing up with the classrooms to build relationship and rapport. So it's going to look like this. There's nine volunteers in nine classrooms in each pod. So the volunteers are going to be partnered with the classroom to be there for an extended period of time to really get to know the kids and really get to know the teachers and spend time once a week doing that reading with the kids. So they're going to read with the students, the students are going to read to them, they're going to talk about the stories that they read. So the goal is to have more opportunities for kids to read out loud to adults and to build relationships with the community and excitement around reading. So that's getting started within the next couple of weeks. The next is adding on to our positive behavior interventions and supports that we already have going, our PBIS. And at Oakwood, for a number of years since Mrs. Spann was actually there, has been the three Rs. So our students are respectful, they're responsible, reflective, and everything that we do around our school community kind of circles around those three Rs. In the past, we've recognized students by a Student of the Week certificates that sometimes don't make it home, so parents aren't always knowing that the kids are being recognized. So we're kind of upping it a little bit this year to make it, I guess, a little bit more exciting and a little bit more communicative with families about what the students are doing to show those three R behaviors. So this year, we're implementing the Principal's Positive 200. And I want to show you a little bit about what that is. The kids don't know about this one yet either. It's coming soon. So the Principal's Positive 200 takes already what we have established for the three Rs and really recognizes kids for specifically displaying those behaviors. So if a student, for instance, the other day was being respectful, I was trying to walk through the hallway, there was a line of kids going, and one of the students stopped the line and made a break so that I could cross. So that certificate that you see up there, the Principal's 200 Club might say, Nicholas has been awarded the Principal's 200 Club Award for being respectful and letting someone pass in the hallway. Rather, before, it was, you know, you were student of the week, you did great, but they often didn't know what they did. So kind of really naming for them what they did and noticing which R they did and what they did to deserve that. So when they get that certificate, they come to the office and then they get to draw a number between 0 and 200, and then their name goes on the 200 chart. The 200 chart is where they get to be acknowledged publicly because it's going to be displayed in that we've been to our school, the Center of Boyer, we call it the atrium, it's not really an atrium, that's what we call it, and there's a bulletin board there, and then that's where the 200 board will be all year long. So that when kids get their name drawn, they pick a number, their name goes on a chart. When 10 kids in a row get, it's kind of like a bingo board, I guess, so when 10 kids are all lined up in a row, then the 10 children in that column or diagonal or row are selected to have a celebration with the principal. So we'll have like a pizza party or an ice cream party or some kind of celebration to just, you know, acknowledge them for showing that positive behavior. And then the last thing, after they each get their award, that slip of paper might not always make it home like the certificates we were giving, so they'll also get a positive phone call from myself or the Behavior Interventionist, whichever of us can get to at first. So that's kind of the next layer to our PBIS, making it real for the kids and I guess making it more concrete for them what exactly they're doing and just like the kind of behavior that we want to see going forward. Those are the new things that are happening, the new additions to what we're already doing anyway, to kind of enrich the things that are going on at Oakwood. Are there any questions about either of those things? All right. We're going to bring our kids back to tell you how it goes as we actually get it launched. Don't tell them though.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, next weekend is Brandon, a school student. How come you're flying solo today? What happened?
Yeah, she's at work, so I was like, I'll just do it by myself then. So homecoming went good, the dance was fun, the game was fun, the parade went well, everything just was a lot of fun. Upcoming is charity week. That's more for snow coming, but we're already starting to plan it. So that's basically where we take a whole week and we do multiple activities just to raise a maximum amount of money for a charity. I don't know if they got fully approved, but we really wanted to do the Michigan Humane Society this year because, I don't know, like a lot of high school students love dogs. Just love dogs and animals, and so that was one that we all wanted to do. Also coming up is Challenge Day. Those of you who don't know, Challenge Day is just where we get a bunch of kids together in the auxiliary gym and this program comes and you just like get to meet new people and you really learn about like the struggles that everyone goes through and you, I don't know, you just become more like aware that everyone's going through something and that we could all just like be nicer. And so that is going to be two days long this year and BGYA or Brandon Global Youth Assistance is actually funding one of the days. So that was really cool. And then this year, in the yearbook, the seniors get senior quotes and that's like hasn't happened before in a super long time, and so we're all very excited about that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Dr. Alba, superintendent's update.
Okay, this evening, I'm just going to do a brief update on our district enrollment. So if we look at our different buildings, just to give you an idea, we obviously reorganized the district last year into four buildings. And I'll just give you an idea of how many students we have in each spot. Harvey Swanson, that's 526, and so on and so forth. You can see our sizes here. Overall, as a district, we had just under 2,500 students K-12 this year. We have 165 in our preschool program. So what does that mean? Let's put that in context. At the elementary level, it's a loss of about 30 students. It's what we anticipated. We have some smaller classes, we have different phases kind of within our district, and we had a small fourth grade class that moved into fifth grade. Those fifth graders moved into middle school. So we anticipated that loss. At the middle school, we're fairly stable. At the high school, we had a big class that left and a small class that came in. And I'm going to talk about school of choice in just a minute. As an overall district, we lost 100 students. We had projected 150 student loss. And then at our preschool level, we were at about 100 students in the 2014-15 school year. And we're now all the way up to 165, so that program's really grown. So a question a lot of people ask is, why is Brandon keep losing students? Why are we losing students? These are some of the things. Some of them are big questions about birth rates and people leaving the state of Michigan. We've heard those things, but let's get specific about Brandon. Bottom line is, is that our outgoing classes are bigger than the classes that are coming in. Simple math. For example, we had 259 seniors last year. We have 192 kindergartners this year. 192 is a good number, but it's not 259. School of Choice in two and three is a big one that's changed for us, particularly with our students that come from the Pontiac area. We had a large volume of students in that area. A lot of our school of choice came from there. Avondale and Lake Orion have been incredibly aggressive in recruiting students from Pontiac. They're close, much closer to Pontiac, and they have, like I said, have been very aggressive in their marketing. So we've had less kids coming from charter schools to join us here in Brandon because of the distance. And we also have some students that have been here that have chosen to be closer to home, so they don't have the distance to drive. So we've lost some students there, and that's part of our loss that we've had. For example, last year, 75% of our loss of students last year was school of choice. 75%. So school of choice is a big factor. And then, we always have to keep an eye on this. There are, each year, we lose a few students, and I think most districts do for different reasons. But homeschooling, we lost a couple of kids this year whose families chose to do homeschool. We also had a couple of kids that went to charter school. We have the Kingsbury Charter School, which is over in Oxford. We lost a couple of people to that school district. Just a few, but that adds also to our loss of students. So these are some of the reasons why we're losing students as a district. School of Choice, just to give you perspective on that, these are students coming in from other districts. We have 335 school of choice students. This is down significantly from where we were perhaps five years ago. Now represents about 13% of our overall student population. The truth is, is that it, for stability as a district, which is a goal, school of choice numbers sometimes ebb and flow because of a district opening its doors and whatnot. Your stability comes from your resident students, so 13% is a pretty good number for us to have as we look at long-term stability as a district. We had 40 new school of choice kids this year. Our school of choice over the last two years, we've done a really good job of recruiting more students from areas that are adjoining. All but 11 of our new school of choice students are students that live in communities that are connected to Brandon. Some of our big key takeaways that we have with enrollment, one is a good one. For our budget, as you'll hear in the audit later on today, we have outpaced our projected loss four years in a row. It shows our trend. We knew that we were going to lose students, but our pitch of loss, we've begun stabilizing as a district. Our kindergarten numbers were strong again this year, 192. We've had three straight years in a row where we have had strong kindergarten numbers. That's a great sign for the future for stabilizing as a district. We also realized that school of choice is going to continue to be a factor, particularly with Avondale opening up more and more in how aggressive they are being. I think that we should expect less and less students from Pontiac over the next five years because of that aggressive, aggressive marketing from Avondale and Lake Orion in that area. The district reorganization, obviously reorganizing the district is, you're worried about people potentially leaving the district. We lost potentially leaving the district, we lost very few students as a result of that, so that was a good thing, and I think that's a testament to our staff and people, making sure that people were, that the transition was smooth. And then finally, this is a, I think, some really good news, we have one more big class at the high school. This is the biggest class that we've had for the last few years. After this class graduates, our losses drop off dramatically as a district, and we really start to stabilize as a district. So, that's another really good piece of news for the district. So, it's tough to say losing is a positive, but we have a lot of really positive things going on across the district, and I think our enrollment is one of those positives. We've got some great kids here. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any public comments or questions on our agenda business this evening before we get on to our business agenda? Here even seen none. Move on to our consent agenda, do I have a motion?
Moved that the Brandon Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of approving our consent agenda, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Information and discussion items, so first item on our list is two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen audit presentation by Paul Brandon.
Well, good evening, we are back. And what we're going to do is make this a abbreviated version of what we walked through before. For members of the audience that weren't here previously, my name is Paul Bryant, I was the audit partner, this is Chris Cassab, he was the audit manager for the current year. What we had previously done was walk through various slides for the board members, administration. What we're going to do is just pick out certain ones of those regarding that to walk through again for those that were not here as well as for informational purposes. So, overall, we are looking at the information for June thirty, two thousand seventeen, the district received an unmodified opinion, which as auditors is the best level of opinion that we can give on your financial information. It's our highest level of opinion available that we issue for a school district. If you want to flip to the next one, this was the first slide that we walked through, and on it, Chris is going to walk through a couple of items, but the biggest area that everybody usually has a question of is, well, how did we do for the current year? And a good place to look at that, if you're looking on the screen, you'll see the third line from the bottom that talks about the net change in fund balance. So, the first column would be the final amended budget for the year, for the general fund that the board approved compared to what the actual results were for June thirty, two thousand seventeen. As everyone can see, the district expected to add to its fund balance approximately two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. What it was able to do by looking at various cuts and different organization changes throughout the district this year, it was actually able to add to its fund balance six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, which is a positive thing, especially in the year of transition, other changes that you just heard the superintendent walk through, especially as we'll talk about in a few minutes with a change in your student count over the various years.
Yep, so this slide here is presenting the district's general fund, which is the primary operating fund of the district, this is where all the main revenues come in and also where all the main expenditures come in, so things like teacher salaries and benefits, all the support staff, administration salaries and benefits, supplies, materials, repairs and maintenance. And so, again, on the far-left budget, that's the district's final amended budget in June compared to where the actual numbers came in as of June thirty, two thousand seventeen. So, I'm going to kind of walk down from top to bottom, kind of what's sitting in revenue and expenditures. So, in the twenty-five point eight million dollar number, the main revenue source there is state funding, and that's the district's foundation allowance, which is the state revenue that the district and every Michigan school district gets per pupil. So, it's basically the number of pupils times seven thousand five hundred and eleven dollars, and that, I think, accounts for about probably seventy to eighty percent of the total revenue for the district. Other revenue sources include federal grants, so this would be federal grant funding like Title I and IDEA, which is a special education grant. Other revenue sources include property tax revenues. So, compared to the budget, revenue came in just, underwear was budgeted by about a hundred thousand dollars, but respectively on the expenditure side, expenditures came in much less than budgeted, so expenditures came in about four hundred and forty-three thousand, less than budgeted. So, again, in expenditures, the main expenditures are teacher salaries and benefits, and if you were to break out the expenditures on a percentage basis, about sixty percent of every dollar that's spent by the district is going into the classroom. And so, that's kind of on par with where we see most other districts, and although revenue has declined radically over the last several years because of the declining enrollment, the proportion of dollars spent in the classroom has not changed, it's been kind of right around that fifty-five to sixty percent ratio the last several years.
And before we move from here, I wanted to make sure that, to commend the district as a whole, administration, board members, because if you were doing your own household budget, if you're looking at that last column, to be able to exceed your budget by that amount for the current year with all the moving pieces that you have to deal with, just want to make sure everyone commends themselves for being able to do that, because some of those discussions are not easy, discussions to have to make, decision-wise.
So, we're going to fast forward a couple of slides here and go to a slide presenting the trend in fund balance. So, we talked about revenue, and when you take your revenue, less your expenditures, you're left with your fund balance. So, the district had a fund balance of about three point nine million dollars, and so that's represented by the bar all the way to the right, and so you can kind of see the trend over the last several years. The fund balance has been increasing, which is a good thing. I think the state suggests a fund balance as a percentage of expenditures of about fifteen percent. Very few districts hit that anymore these days. When looking at your fund balance, we've broken it out into two categories, there's unassigned, which is basically unrestricted, it can be used for whatever, and that's about two point two of the three point nine million dollar fund balance. The orange bar is your assigned fund balance, and the big portion of that is about one point two million, which has been designated by the board for repairs of the district's water treatment plant. And you can see the trend over the last several years, the low point was in two thousand thirteen, and again, that's been moving in the right direction then, is a great sign for how you guys have been managing the district. We like to look at fund balance a couple of different ways, so if you looked at your unassigned fund balance, which is a two point two over total expenditures, that's at nine percent, and if you were to take that fund balance and you weren't getting any additional revenues for the entire year, that fund balance would last you about thirty-three days, and if you were to look at that over a hundred and eighty-day school year, that would last the district about sixteen days. And so, that's really it, again, an abbreviated presentation of what we presented before, but we're happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
So, big picture to summarize for the administration as well as the audience, an unmodified opinion for the current year, the district was able to add approximately six hundred thousand dollars to its ending fund balance for the current year, all the while still cutting expenses and following its budget pretty closely for the year, so you can have confidence that the decisions that have been made budget-wise are following right along track-wise. And looking, I, we had a graph that showed your trend unfortunately decreasing regarding your number of students, but looking at your expenses and think, this district puts out a good product. At the end of the day, me as a parent, that's what my most important thing would be, the product for my student, and although the students are leaving for various reasons, you have done everything you can to make sure that that product is a positive, good product that's educating the students in this district, and again, you should be proud of yourself for that.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. Any questions from the audience regarding this audit while we're here? Okay, thanks, John. Jan, do you want to add anything for the finance report?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, not related to the audit, no. Yeah, two things tonight, the first, we have a new robotics leader at the high school, Deb Data, everybody knows Andrew here, he's here for several years, did a great job. I wanted to bring Deb in to introduce you. Our robotics program, the budget is actually bigger than the middle school budget, and they do this through fundraising, we get like five thousand through the state, the rest of it is fundraising. So, it is a big program, they do a wonderful job, there's an action item tonight for how they're going to do some expenditures, the purchasing card, I thought it would be good to introduce Deb, she's, I don't know, maybe some of you know her, but Deb, say hi, or even working with her on the transition in the business office, as well as, well, my end of it, of course, the business office, how she's going to spend all, you know, the means of purchasing and just our rules and getting her college to speed, and she's asking questions and learning quickly, so.
Just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself, I am, this is my sixth year in the district, I have two boys on Truck Town Thunder, a freshman and a sophomore, this is my second year on the team, I joined last year when my sons joined, absolutely love it, when the position was open, I applied, I am one of two full leaders on the team. We're working close to the GM's office, trying to get our budget all set for this year and get things going so that we can hopefully make it to worlds again this year like we did last year and keep this program going.
Well, we're very proud of the program, it's done very, very well for many years, so it's certainly a source of pride with the community and our district, so thank you very much for your service, and we wish it to continue on and grow in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thanks, Deb. My second discussion I have tonight is our E-Rate program, again, there's an approval for some E-Rate projects, I've asked Thomas to come to address because I don't like to talk too much about all the technology stuff. We're asking for the board to approve a contract for fifty-two thousand dollars. Our E-Rate percentage of reimbursement in the past was higher than it is this year, so out of pocket, the district will be approving about twenty-five to thirty thousand, there's still a little bit of a variance. Anyway, it's a good chunk of money that we're contributing, we do get funding from the federal government for a double back. Thomas is here too, if you have any questions on the project and the necessity for the project for the district.
So, we used to get reimbursed about seventy percent.
Not this year, this year it's closer to fifty.
This year it's about fifty percent?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Do you want to ask any questions?
Oh, that, some of it, there's a little bit in there that they just didn't approve, and then the rest of it is just based on the pre-reduced and those types of numbers. So, we still feel it's very much worthwhile to go ahead with the project, even though we're not getting the seventy percent, but Thomas has assured us that these are things that we, for infrastructure, that really will help to keep us moving with our technology.
Can you give us kind of a brief overview of the project?
The project involves upgrading our core switch, as well as the switches that connect to it, which will overall increase the bandwidth. Our main goal with the E-Rate project since we've been started has been to be able to support more devices, higher bandwidth-consuming devices, that's kind of where everything's going, most things are processed in the internet now, so as we get more devices, we're going to start using more bandwidth, so it's definitely something that we're going to need to do regardless, and soon, we're starting to see it as we bring these devices in. We have about seven hundred and ninety-six iPads, three hundred and fifty-four Chromebooks in the district now, and they're consuming a bunch of bandwidth, so all this stuff that we've been doing with E-Rate has been to, obviously, to broaden the capacity of the bandwidth as well as make it more reliable, our network, and obviously secure the devices appropriately as we move forward with that. So, this project this year is strictly just going to increase the bandwidth district-wide, and hopefully going into next year, we'll be able to finish it district-wide, broadening the bandwidth for the devices.
Okay, any questions?
This program has really allowed us to, allow our infrastructure, category two funding, I think, about three years ago, so it's relatively new, federal program, and it really has been helpful to us, we've taken advantage of the application process is very lengthy, and Thomas has done a really good job of that.
So, really, over the last three years, if I recall, we've probably done a couple hundred thousand dollars with the projects, right?
Yeah.
And reimbursed up till now.
At least, we've done more than two hundred, one year we did a hundred and fifty alone, so we've probably done closer to about three hundred thousand, and then the reimbursement from the federal government.
By two thousand nineteen, we should, we will receive about, hopefully, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in funds for devices that we're going to have to purchase regardless, so it's a huge cost saving over the last two years.
Great. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff.
Anything else, Jan?
No.
Okay, next we have educational report, little grade coaches by Debbie Brower.
Hello.
Oh.
Tonight, we're going to introduce you to our two university coaches, K-5. This year, both the coaches are focusing mainly on reading instruction in the classroom, working directly with the classroom teacher to grow instruction, which ultimately equates to students achieving. And Carrie Losi is working mainly with Re-5, upper L, and Jessica Pebble is working mainly with K-3, or K-2, lower L, both reading, and though they go their separate ways quite often, they come together also to do the important work of reflecting, and we come together and talk with each other and principals to make sure we're on the right track with growing core instruction and helping our students achieve. So, tonight, they'd like to share with you what they've been up to and where they're heading next.
So, welcome, I see some familiar faces. So, our vision this year was to use student data to plan for and coach or co-teach with teachers all the components of guided reading. And this year, we've really worked to develop a collaborative approach for that so that the teachers that we're working with are self-directed. I've been coaching now for about five years, and in the past, a lot of times what I did is a whole lot of like, hey, this child is doing this, what should I do? Or, this child isn't thinking about the meaning when reading this story, what should I do? And now, the approach is kind of like, well, what do you think? You know, what are some options that we've been talking about? So, it's kind of different than that way.
To start with what is guided reading? Guided reading is a small group, normally four to six students, reading instruction. All the students in the group are at this reading level, but their specific need might look different. For example, like Carrie said, it might be self-monitoring for meaning, so to stop if the story doesn't make sense. It might be what to do when they get toward they don't know, how to take a word apart. For some of our catering kids, it might just be getting started with the first sound. So, all of their goals might look a lot different, even though they're in a group. So, guided reading lets us meet each of the students' specific needs while accelerating their progress because they're in a small group. Guided reading is two to three days, depending on what level you're working with, but they all include a book introduction, word work, reading, and then guided writing to go along with the reading.
So, what have we done so far? We have engaged in one-on-one coaching conversations with the teachers that we're working with. This has been so powerful, and how we've done it is really a lot of support from Debbie Brower and the administrators because the communication has been really clear with the teachers, the expectations are clear, and we have a set time to go in and work with teachers, so that's really been helpful too.
We have collaborated with teachers to implement guided reading with fidelity by the second full week of school this year. We did this through our coaching models that we presented to teachers, so the three options that we had, which a lot of people began first with us modeling and the teacher watching, and then us reflecting afterwards, then we moved to co-teaching, where we were planning and teaching together and then reflecting afterwards, and lastly, the teacher modeling, where we kind of sit back and observe and reflect with the teacher afterwards. Already, the first few weeks of school, we've kind of been able to move through that with teachers, to see teachers become more self-directed, and then our guide in this process has been the next step forward. And then our guide in this process has been the next step forward in guided reading, which however our teachers have received and that's been our guide that we're taking to do right now too.
And so another thing that we've done is we've just made sure that everybody who is working with students in reading is knowledgeable and feels confident about the components in guided reading. And one of the things that I'm really excited about is the classroom instructional assistants. We've been able to do some professional development with them on a regular basis. We did it for a week at the beginning of the year and we're doing our second round with them this week. So I'm pretty excited about that because in the past, they really haven't had much training. So how do we know it's working? It's kind of exciting. There are some quote, direct quotes up there that we've been hearing, but just a couple that stick out for me. One teacher came up to me on Friday and she said, "I'm really loving this guided writing, you know, it's really making a difference with kids." So that's exciting when teachers are saying positive things. And another teacher said, "Wow, I can meet with these small groups consistently," where in the past they might not have thought it was possible. So that's kind of cool too, because whenever you can get with a smaller group, you learn a whole lot more about kids, so.
And the things that we're hearing students saying, which is also a lot of fun for us, is just them saying, "Reading is fun." Ida Kinerenner come up to me last week and say, "Oh my gosh, I can read." And then when we walk into a room, we're hearing them ask us and the teachers, "When do we get to work with you again?" And I'm in a group today, so they're excited and teachers are seeing that they're excited.
So what's next for us? We just want to build momentum and keep it going and, you know, switch it up, start working with new teachers, continue the professional development with the classroom, the instructional assistants, and then.
Teachers as well. Our focus is really on new teachers and teachers new to specific grade levels. And then like Carrie said, just kind of switching it up every few weeks. We're in the process of figuring out our next schedule so we can meet with teachers that we haven't met with yet this year and just continuing to reflect and grow our practice and our practice with teachers.
Well, you guys did a really good job of presenting that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And it was quite good information, so I found it to be pretty interesting. Good job.
Can you tell we love what we do?
Yeah.
Well, you were very natural in how you spoke about it, so that leads me to believe that you're pretty involved in what you're doing, which is kind of, see, a good thing.
It's been an exciting year so far.
And it's early.
Yeah. Great.
You guys have any questions? Anything? All right, thank you very much. Okay, now we're going into our action items. First thing on our agenda is approval of the technology projects that we talked about just a moment ago, so do we have a motion for that?
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the technology project not to exceed $52,911 as presented.
Second.
Okay, do we need any further discussion on that matter considering we just heard about that one? Okay, all those in favor of approving the motion for technology projects, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Approval of the contract, the Brandon Education Association.
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the E-A contract.
Support.
Okay. Do you want to have any discussion about this item here before we take our vote? I know we talked about it a little bit in our earlier session. Anyone talk about anything else?
No.
Okay, for those who don't know in the audience, this is the contract for the teachers specifically is what this is.
If you would.
Yeah, sure. So negotiating with teachers and we have an agreement that we're bringing here tonight that's a combination of some forward progress by the teaching staff as well as some concessions, things that are going to help us serve children better. In the end, teachers are moving forward financially. Teacher world, step is a really important piece and we're going to be moving forward a step at a 2% increase and they're also going to be giving us some cost containment language that's going to help us conserve costs this year and, so that's a general summary.
Thank you very much. Okay, all those in favor of approving the Brandon Education Association contract, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries. Next one, the approval of contract for the Brandon Administrators Association.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the B-A-A contract as presented.
Support.
Okay, this contract is for our administrators, so slightly different?
Building Administrator Group. It's going to be a 2% increase, which would be similar with the teachers, they're not going to, they don't have steps, there won't be no steps there, but there are a couple things, a little longevity in there for people that stay with the district for a long time. There's some reward in there for long-term service of the district. So that is our administrative contract.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the Brandon Administrators Association contract, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, next is our audit. A motion?
Move the Brandon Board of Education approve the 2016-2017 school district audit results as presented.
Second.
Okay, this is approving the audit that we had the presentation from earlier this evening from Plank Moran. So is any further discussion on this? Okay, all those in favor of approving the 2016-2017 school district audit as presented, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, any opposed? Okay, purchasing card.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve a purchase card for Deb Davis, one of the Brandon robotics team with maximum credit line of $2,000 as presented.
Second.
Okay, and we met Deb earlier talking about the robotics team, so I think we know what that's all about as well. Any comments, Sarah?
I did want to add that it's 2,000 monthly.
Got it, 2,000 monthly. Okay, any further discussion on this? All those in favor of approving the purchase card for Deb Davis, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, and lastly, the high school ban overnight trip to Chicago.
Move that the Brandon Board of Education approve the high school ban overnight trip to Chicago, May 12 through the 13th, 2018 as presented.
Support.
Okay, any discussion on this matter? You know exactly what we're doing?
Looks like a good trip.
Yeah, they're, it's a new trip, may have to put together, tries to go into Chicago.
In May. Got that? All right.
Order something.
All those approving, all those in favor of approving the high school ban to go to Chicago, please vote by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right. That concludes our action items. Do we have any citizens input this evening? Okay, I would like to thank everybody as far as the E-A and the VAA for their cooperation and working with us on getting, well called favorable contracts settled for both parties. Again, thanks for everybody who presented here this evening. Thanks for all of your efforts. Thank you to the Boy Scouts for picking us off tonight. And with that, our meeting is now adjourned.